I'd like to call and order the March 23rd, 2021 Spring Grove Board of Education. Here.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 1.2, the adoption of our agenda motion.
Salute.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Item 1.3, we have the approval of the February 24th, 2021.
Salute.
Second. Anderson?
Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Item 1.4 is the approval of our March 10th, 2021.
Second.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
Suki?
Yes. Yes. Section 2, public participation, introduction of guests, 2.1. We have anybody from our Spring Grove Education Association. 2.2, Spring Grove Classified Employees Association. Item 2.3, pre-arranged, we have no pre-arranged public speakers. Then item 2.4, public participation. This is public participation specific to a business section agenda item. And that's an item that we vote on this evening. We're going to move to section 3, that's our work session. 3.1 is our work session, public participation. And this meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. It is not to be considered a public community meeting. There will be the opportunity for public comment after each work session item has been presented, lasting no longer than three minutes in total per person. The person speaking will need to verbally state their name and address. Addressing specific individuals, including all Spring Grove Community City School staff by name, will not be permitted. Please note that the Board or Administration is not required to respond to public participation. If you have any specific operational questions, please contact the appropriate administrator. So we're going to move into 3.2, which is our committee reports. And this evening, we have our diversity and inclusion committee. Mr. Hook, hand it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Hook, members of the Board. The committee elected met last Wednesday, our 17th. We currently have 19 members on the committee with representation from the African-American, Hispanic, Asian, LGBT, Q community, as well as parents, students, teachers, staff, Administration, and a couple of board members. We introduced our third-party facilitator for the diversity and inclusion committee, which we felt a couple of months ago was needed as we navigate through all of the development of our policies and how we train staff, et cetera. We just felt that was critical, everybody did. Tiffany Taylor Smith from the University of Dayton will be joining us for the next probably six months, however long it takes, I guess. She brings 30 years of experience helping organizations develop cultural competency in diversity programs. As I mentioned, she is the Executive Director of the University of Dayton for Inclusive Excellence. The meeting started with a presentation by two of our students, Sima and Abby. They did a slight presentation on racism in our schools and some of their personal experiences. They presented that to our staff this fall. So it was kind of good for the whole community here in the committee to be able to see what was presented to the staff, you know? And I just got to tell you, they just did such a wonderful job. Outstanding students. It's not easy to stand up and talk in public, and it's certainly not easy to talk in front of adults, you know, as a student. So I think I saw Lena, let me tell your daughter what a wonderful job she did. And Abby as well, I just thought it was fantastic. The second part of the meeting really was a recap of the community action meeting, which was hosted by Peacock, Parents Empowering All Children of Color from the 94th, Tuesday the 16th. Several administrators from the district, myself, and several board members were in attendance, were invited and were in attendance. So we heard personal stories from two of our African-American students about their experiences personally with racism. Their stories produced many feelings. On a personal level, I felt sadness and heartache for our children. Again, it just took great courage for kids to be able to, well, to talk about a period, but also to be able to stand up in front of adults and up in a forum like that. And I'm just very proud of the strength they displayed. After that portion, then we talked about four items that the committee, the Peacock Committee asked in terms of having completed by our honor about April 15th. The first one was policy banning the Confederate flag, other symbols of hatred or racism public through written communications to teachers, students, parents, and stakeholders. The second item was making public through written communication to teachers, students, parents, and stakeholders, the steps taken and consequences applied when racist incidences occur according to Board policy and school policy. The three was to deliver to teachers, parents, students, stakeholders, a written statement from the Superintendent and Board that racism and hate that's prevalent in the school community is not acceptable and will not be tolerated. And four, training professional level liaisons and adults, first in the junior high and the high school, and then ultimately in all buildings, to advocate and mediate for children of color when an incident of racism occurs within the schools. These requests, in my opinion, are something that I believe that the Board can support. And I anticipate that by April 15th, these items will have happened or will be well down the road being completed. On a personal note, and this is mine, is that I believe that all children deserve to attend school in a safe environment that is conducive to learning. It is critical that we not only teach, but we model respect, kindness, and acceptance for all. We cannot tolerate hate-filled racial, ethnic, religious, or sexual-based derogatory comments. We are Panthers. We are above hatred, discriminatory, and harassing words and actions. I truly believe that we can make our schools better and our community better, and only if we work together in a common cause. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hook. We want to hear the two board members on our DNI committee.
Well, before we get started, I just would like to question why 2.4, I went back multiple meetings, and 2.4, public participation, has always just been public participation on an agenda item. Tonight, it says, "Public participation on a business section agenda item," an agenda item up for vote tonight.
We're going to have public participation items.
But why would we not be, have given, people are clearly here for a purpose. Why was that changed tonight? Mr. Hook just talked about modeling respect. People are here because clearly they want to speak. Why did we change that tonight?
This is a work session.
No, that has not stated that. I went back multiple meetings.
We're going to have public participation.
There should have been a time at 2.4 for these community members to have spoken to anything on the agenda that has always stated that until tonight. I feel we should go back to 2.4, and they should be able to speak to anything on this agenda. It doesn't matter if we're voting on it. It's never mattered if we voted on it. And then again, if they want to comment on it again when we talk about the DNI committee, then they should have a second opportunity. That's how it's always been. That's how we show respect. We follow the same rules that we've always followed. I do not understand why that was changed early.
Just as I said, I didn't appreciate that was a change. That was always my understanding, that that was for the, anything that was on the business side of the agenda, that the work session was, we have an opportunity in the work session.
I clarified by checking through past meetings. I'll never speak.
I'm not arguing that point. I'm saying that's my understanding just of how it worked.
So I feel we should go back to 2.4, and if anybody wants to speak on an agenda item, whether we vote or not, they should be given that opportunity.
We are going to do that as soon as, if you have no comments on 3.2, we can move directly to comments on item 3.2 from the public.
But there's a progression that we should hear then before we talk about the committee.
Sorry. If we would like participation on 3.2, I'll get it to the public right now.
And then we'll have a chance to comment afterwards? Is that how we're going to do it? No, no, I'm just saying, I had comments that I'd like to share, that the member of the DNI committee that was there, now I'm a little bit thrown off in terms of the sequence, because I thought we did that, and then the public has their opportunity.
The purpose was to try to streamline, so we gave everybody ample time to comment. So on item 3.2, which I'm presuming is why most board members is here.
But they could re-comment again once they hear what Jamie and I have to share as the board members on DNI. There should be a couple times within they had a comment.
What is the difference between if you go now and if you go later?
There is no reason we should have changed this. The way that we have always done our board meetings is public participation on anything. Then we discuss it, and if there's anything else that comes up, because there's been multiple times that people have asked to talk about stuff, and then later on, we might end up talking about it, other conversations come up, and they might have a question or something they want to state, and they can come back up to the podium based off of something that Jamie and I might say being the board reps there. It's just the way that our agenda is set. We should have changed it, trying to streamline. They should have two opportunities if that's what they feel they need to share.
Would they remember what we had shared on items 1, 2, 3, 4?
Why don't we do this? Why don't we open it up right now? You can save your comments, and then if we'll have follow-up questions or comments, they can come forward. So right now, we'll open it up to discussion on item 3.2.
The DNI will hold their comments until?
Yes. Mr. Blagje and Ms. Bab will hold their comments. So if you have any participants for item 3.2?
For 2.4 or 3.2?
3.2.
But they haven't heard our comments.
Ms. Bab?
I would like to hear what the public has to say. We don't have public participation.
This is Bab. That is what I'm saying. It will come up right now. You will withhold your comments. We will go through it.
Thank you.
And then we'll have an opportunity to make comments, and then we will go back to the public.
Thank you.
Okay. Would anyone like to speak on item 3.2? If you would, please come to the lectern, and we'll try to keep an orderly manner.
Stephanie Vindman, I'll break the ice. I am, this is wonderful. I want to be an advocate for a lot of people, and I'm glad that you're bringing a lot of this stuff to everybody's attention, because I think a lot of us didn't know things that were happening in our community. I think one of the lowest parts of anything I've ever seen at a school board meeting was when a community member unfurled a Confederate flag during a meeting. It was horrible. But based on what just happened with two of our high school students, do we have plans on what we're going to do for sexual? It's part of the thing, some kind of training to respect women and not try to intimidate them and say that they should be sex, they should be part of, 100% of them should be sexually harassed, like the boys that put out. Do we have some kind of training in the pipeline for that? Thank you. And I should change it. They're men, sorry, they're high schoolers.
Anyone else on item 3.2 before I turn it back over to board members? And then again, there will be comments or comments, the time afterwards to comment from board member comments.
I'm sorry, are we talking? Forgive me, I'm having a difficult time hearing and understanding. We're talking about 3.2?
Yeah, and that's, 3.2, we didn't, sorry. 3.2 on tonight's agenda, I apologize. If you have it printed out, is committee reports. So it's item probably 3.6 on your agenda, Bab, we're in committee reports. Anything on the diversity and inclusion?
Excuse me, is this a time for public participation to speak about things like the DNI committee?
Yes.
Thank you.
My name is Lena Reiki Salmon. And I have a junior in high school. I am on the DNI committee along with my junior, and I also have a class of 2019 graduate. And what I want to make sure everybody understands is the type of harassment our children of color are experiencing. We did not decide to go public when our daughter received some images, and I don't know if that's what the difference is, and that's why some things got addressed with the sexual harassment picture or not. But these are pictures that were sent to high schoolers. We have several copies. We have large-scale copies. So if I am going to ask my board members, is this picture any less offensive than joking about raping people and getting it to 100%? Is this any less offensive? No. So I would like to know why the schools are not acting in such a vocal manner. I will also say that my daughter received extreme support from the high school, but this stuff keeps happening. This happened December 25th, 2019. This happened March when? February something?
February 20th.
Of this year? Of this year. Here you go, my friend. For sure, for sure. We just keep, we're hitting whack-a-mole. I think that's a game that you play at like Chuck E. Cheese or whatever. We're sick of playing whack-a-mole. There needs to be some sort of change. These children go in and they're scared. They do not learn effectively. Ericsson's model on learning, the first thing you need to do is provide a safe and secure learning environment. We are not doing that. Children should not have to worry about seeing the Confederate flag. Children should not have to have other people flash their Confederate flag belt buckles at them. That does not make sense. Children should not be called the N-word with a ER or with an A. It just should not happen. So it needs to stop. If we are committed to providing an excellent environment for our students, this type of stuff needs to stop. I did print out copies of our four asks, so if anyone needs those, do you have one? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Christopher Reed. I'm on several diversity committees in the community. So first, I'm a father. I have a ninth grader at the high school. And so the picture that you saw just brought out the word nigger. And I say that word because our kids don't see N-word, they see the actual word, so we shouldn't be spared. So when she saw that young lady quote-unquote was a friend, and she asked her why she posted that, she said it was a joke. My daughter said it wasn't funny, and she said, "Well, everybody says it, so you might as well get used to it." And this is what our kids of color are being told in the messages that they're receiving. And so I will say that when I brought it to the administrations, specifically Kyle, he acted very swiftly to address it as much as possible as he saw it within his purview. And because I'm on several committees, I've shared it with a couple of board members and the Superintendent, because we own a community together as well. And everybody, you know, expressed how, you know, sad they were about the whole thing. But as you've heard, it seems like, and this is what I'm confused about, because last Tuesday, as you've heard, we had a meeting at the church, and some of our kids got up and shared their experiences. Now, when you have to do this as a child, and you've already been traumatized one time, can you imagine getting up in front of a bunch of adults? Everyone's can't get up in front of a bunch of people, and we are adults. So you have to share that again, so it traumatizes you and you experience terrorism all over again. Now, this is the part where it gets a little fuzzy for me. The terrible events that happened over the last couple of days, there was a different response. It was a swift response, and I think it should have been a swift response, okay? But our kids have been terrorized for several years. My 19-year-old dealt with the whole nigger thing in the fifth grade, okay? So our building has been on fire for a long time, all right? So I'm just confused on what the criteria is, because what we had to do in the meeting last Tuesday, when we got our children up, we had to ask for things that seemed to happen automatically a couple of days ago. And so I'm not really sure, and I'm sure that, you know, someone would help me understand why there was a difference in response, because what it looks like on the surface, and I'm sure that's not how the board feels, that the children of color don't matter as much, okay? And so that's how, that's the optics. But since we're here in the spirit of communication and understanding and bridging the gap, then we want the opportunity for this to be explained. And if it was just a misstep, that's okay too. We can forgive, it's not, you know, let's just figure it out. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sahabi Salmon-Reiki. I'm a current student at Ohio State and a 2019 graduate of Spring Grove. I went ahead and wrote out what I was going to say, because I have a tendency to ramble when things are very important to me and very problematic. This is something that I have dealt with. I've been back home for a year now because of the pandemic, and it's been perfect timing because I've been able to relive what I've been through in high school. And now I'm out of the system, and I'm able to use my voice. This is not the first time I have spoken out about racism at a school board meeting, but I'm very hopeful it will be my last. In 2018, a boy in my grade told me, quote, "You are a junior at Spring Grove High School. That is as white as a school can get. You are as white as the rest of us." In 2017, another boy told me I was wrong for being scared to grow up as a black woman in America. In 2019, I was called the N-word when I was just walking in the hallway. These are an example of the racist behavior that I have experienced while attending Spring Grove schools. And as you can tell, this is something I'm super passionate about, something I'm getting a degree in, public health, racism, and education, very important to the health of our community and the people around us. I will not be portrayed as an angry black woman, even though I am very angry and I am a black woman. I'm tired of hearing things that people are just saying to kind of get the weight off their back when change isn't actually being made. People have, children have sacrificed their emotional well-being, their peace, and their comfort to relive their traumas for this community. And the fact that we have not actually gotten a whole bunch done is very frustrating to me as someone who just barely made it out of the trauma herself. According to Policy 5517, quote, "It is the policy of the Board of Education to maintain an education and work environment that is free from all forms of unlawful harassment." Policy 5515 says, quote, "The Board of Education, recognizing that our students will work and live in a culturally diverse world, believes it is part of our mission to provide a positive, harmonious environment in which the differences of individuals are recognized. The asks of Peacock are not unrealistic nor greedy. As a young woman with many marginalized identities, I am telling you that you are doing a disservice to me and those who look like me, and I will not stand for it any longer. The members of the Board are elected to protect the rights of the students and their families, and these requests do just that. There is no excuse for any further delay of the asks made by Peacock. Children are the future of our world, and they deserve our respect and energy. Please act accordingly. Thank you."
Anyone else before I turn it back over to our board members? Again, there will be a comment section after the comment. Did you hear Ms. Bab?
So as Mr. Hook shared, regarding the DNI committee meeting, I wanted to start by thanking you, it was Sima and Abby that gave, took the DNI committee through the presentation that they had given to our staff. And it was, obviously, there was a lot of work and thought that went into it. I appreciated them taking us back through that, again, after we did our staff this fall. But I thought the most encouraging part of that presentation was when we were discussing it as a group, we asked the students if they had, if they had noticed anything that had changed in this school year, recognizing that this is a bit of a different year, but had they seen any changes and improvements? And there were some stories that were shared from some of the students that are members of the DNI committee, just about some of the positive things that they have seen happening that they have not, that they experienced previously with their education. And so I just, I like to make a large part of that is just because of Sima and Abby and the work that they did in that presentation. And it's obviously a first step towards, you know, trying to do more of that with everybody in our school community, which I'll touch on in a second. And then Chris, who shared with us this evening, shared an update from the Peacock session. I was not able to attend because we're bound by certain sunshine laws in terms of how many of us can be in attendance and able to participate. But I was able to watch the video. I appreciate Lena pass the video, at least as well pass the video log, and was able to watch. And as Mr. Hook shared and as others have shared tonight, you know, the first thing you feel is just heartbreak, obviously. For the students, and it's just so incredibly disheartening to hear what they faced in our schools, and it was mentioned here this evening, just... And it was mentioned here this evening, just the courage it took for them to relive that trauma and share that with a room full of adults. I mean, it was tremendous to see them display that courage. But again, just sickening and heartbreaking. You've heard some of it tonight and you've seen some of the pictures. And so I'm really glad that Chris was able to bring that back to the DNI committee and that we have established, I think we had three meetings now, but obviously, you know, we as a board recognize that this was something that, as was just mentioned here, that we really need to start blocking the block, not just talking the talk. And I think that's why we created this committee. We had a tremendous response from the community in terms of the people that applied, and we've got nineteen different folks that are on there. And I think that as we go forward, similar to sort of all the other committees that we have established, you know, I think it's important that we've done this. And we had a really great discussion with that group, and there was a ton of ideas shared, and it really underscored, obviously, the importance of what we're doing. But I think through these past couple of conversations, we also recognize that we need some help and some expertise to help harness that passion and really turn that into action. And so, as Mr. Hook mentioned, I had Tiffany Taylor Smith from the University of Dayton and their Office of Diversity Equity and Inclusion that was there with us. And she had a program prepared, and she was able, she was going to take us through, but it was postponed because we just had such a robust patchment discussion. It was great that she was able to be there and to hear that. But I think it's really going to be great to have her come alongside us and really thankful that we've made that investment as a district to bring her and her team. And she shared a little bit, you know, that there's really going to be this focus on four pillars, our faculty and staff, and some of the things that we can do in that regard, which kind of speaks directly to the fourth action point here that I'll get to in a second. Another pillar of that work would be around our climate and our culture and what we can do to influence students and our families. There'd be a curriculum pillar of that work, where we could really evaluate what we're doing from a pre-K through 12 perspective as it relates to this topic. And then the fourth sort of pillar would be, how do we share this work with our community? And so I'm really excited. She'll be with us at our next meeting, which is here in a couple of weeks, where she'll take us through the presentation that she had prepared and we'll start to dive into this more. And the other encouraging piece is that there will be opportunities really in short order to bring in broader folks from the community, not just the people that are actually on the committee. As I mentioned, we had just a ton of people that applied, and it's clear there's a lot of passion and energy for this topic. And I think it's great, too, that through this process that Tiffany's going to take us through, that, you know, we're able to sort of hear from a broader group and have them sort of shape and influence what we're doing as a district. So I'm really anxious to get that work underway and thankful, again, that we brought her in, brought her to come alongside us. In terms of the requests that were made of us through Peacock, I wholeheartedly support them. I'm really glad that we have the opportunity tonight to discuss this and that it's been brought to us and that we, as a board, can go around and express our support for this. You know, I think the things that are talked, I guess, specifically points one, point two, and point three, for this message. For me personally, I think it's really important that it carries our name, the Board of Education's name. But that really can only happen by having this step where there's this public conversation. Unfortunately, we can't do it over email or phone or in small groups, and I know that's cumbersome and frustrating, but it obviously can be interpreted as that there's not this importance or urgency, but we are sort of bound by those things, and I'm so glad that we're able to do that tonight and express our support. I think Mrs. Bab asked a question over email that Mr. Hook shared back. It sounds like you're doing a pretty thorough review of our policies as part of these statements. And I'm appreciative of the work that's going into that so that when we release the statements or reaffirming these things, that it's complete, thorough, and clear. And I, for one, just really look forward to having the chance to officially approve that when that work is complete at our next meeting. So I'm appreciative of the effort that's going into that and, again, wholeheartedly support the action items that Peacock shared with us. And again, thank you. Again, I don't think I said this earlier, but I appreciate the fact that they set this up and invited the board and were able to share that with us afterwards. So thank you. And again, I look forward to officially giving that our approval when we're able to do that tonight.
I agree that Tiffany is going to bring, she has amazing knowledge and background to this, so she's really going to bring the structure that we need, a lot of background in helping schools with that. So he gave a good explanation to all of that. I do want to, in, I was at the Peacock meeting as a parent, not as a board member, because my son was one who gave some of his experiences that he went through last year. So I did a little bit of digging just because I feel like it's important that we do our due diligence to the requests that were asked. And the first, the first was around the banning, making a policy banning the Confederate flag as a symbol of racism public through written communication and teacher, students, parents, and stakeholders. And what I really realized with the first three points is there is nothing that the Peacock group asked that was a change of policy. It is just making sure that everybody knows this is so important in our district that we are elevating the importance of it. So that is, you know, there aren't huge changes. It's just that we're done having it happen to our kids of color. So, you know, as I looked through the policy and I pulled, I think it was Sahabi who referenced Policy 5517, and it defines harassment and bullying and all of these different things. And I was curious because one of the questions says, or one of the requests says, "The steps taken and consequences applied when racist incidents occur." So I actually contacted, because I have, I network with other school districts, I wanted to know what other school districts did. Did they list out the consequences? Because that can be frustrating. Why won't you put it in your policy? It is not common in other school districts either because the administrators need that flexibility to look at the situation. And it might be that it's worthy of an expulsion. It might be that it's worthy of a three-day suspension. So there's a lot of very similar wording, and I checked with seven different school districts. So I just wanted to share that out, that as we're looking at what we're doing with ours, it is a very common practice to be able to trust our administrators. And I heard with the experiences that I've had and what was shared at the Peacock meeting is that people have really been pleased with the one-on-one situations that, when there's been racial incidents, of how our administrators have handled them. The frustration is that it keeps happening over and over. And our, we have, clearly, we have racist issues in Springbrough because kids think it's okay. Our administrators are saying, no, and they're handling it well, but kids keep thinking it's okay. And that's why the request, from my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Peacock people, but it's that we want to elevate it, so families are out there talking to their kids, just like when Mr. Martin put the one call out there saying, "Parents, talk to your kids and help them understand, we're done, we're not going to put up with this." So I also looked at, when looking over our policy, I was just curious if all racial incidents are considered harassment and are part of our tracking system where we have to track everything on the website? So is everything tracked there? So if we looked at the number of bullying incidents, would all racial incidents be included with that? I just didn't know if that would, because in 5517.01, it states, I'm guessing that would fall under harassment and that it should be there. So I just wanted to make sure that we were also tracking that because I do think it's important that, that that is, because that's one of, and the other thing was, it states that we should be communicating out annually, and that's one of the requests from the Peacock that we're elevating it. And like one of the suggestions in the, in our own policy is it could be through a report card, and I'm guessing maybe it's in one of those agendas that we all sign that we read. I don't think we all read every page of it, so maybe that we need to look at a different way of communicating this if we're really elevating it because clearly there's some stuff in there that all of us don't know. And if we're going to elevate and say, "We're done putting up with this," I think we need to look at pulling this policy out and saying, "This is different than all of these other ones because we're raising it to another level because we're done dealing with this." So that was just some things that, as I looked at what was asked of us in from Peacock and then looked at the policy and looking back and forth, the policies are in place. It's just what can we do with this? And I love the idea of what Jamie said, that Tiffany's going to help us with. Their request was not to bring in new staff, it was to train some staff so when we have racial incidents that happen, they know how to really support our students to deal with it. I think that's a brilliant idea, and I fully support putting the additional funds to help train those staff because our students of color deserve that extra support. So thank you for those that were willing to speak out.
And I'll add to that. I had the privilege of attending the Peacock meeting last Tuesday and certainly appreciate the Peacock Executive Board's invitation and myself and Mr. Anderson attended on behalf of the Board. And I share Mr. Blonge and Ms. Bab's comments. I mean, it was a very powerful, emotional evening, and I thought we could hear from five students, and they were all very powerful stories. And I wholeheartedly agree, this is from Tuesday night. You know, I have full support of our four requests from the Peacock Committee. And I also want to echo, I think there's likely some confusion that may have stemmed from the fact that Sunday's incident happened, this Sunday, and that when the Board sends out a letter, we've got to author the letter in public. So what happened over Sunday obviously did not come from the Board. That was administration, and that was the ability to send it out immediately. With Peacock's asks and the fact that, you know, the expectation is by April 15th, I absolutely believe we can meet that deadline or beat that deadline. But at the same time, that's going to take what we're doing right now and then another meeting to actually make it happen so that it actually comes from the Board. Excuse me.
To that point, Dan, I'm curious, as situations happen, if we have repeated situations at the high school, if it might be appropriate that Mr. Martin sends some of those out, they can be from him, but says, "We're having repeated incidents at the high school. Parents, speak to your teens, please." I just feel like it's good to come from the Board, but just like we did a crisis team on Sunday, I think we need to be willing to say, "We're in crisis mode." Like what Chris said, the burning, the building is burning. At times, we don't have time to have our huddle. We've got to say, "We're in crisis mode." And that's where I believe I'm hearing the frustration is some of these students are in crisis.
The Board of Education is more like the Titanic than the speedboat. And I think that, you know, again, having the ability of administrators to be able to react quickly and appropriately is the right thing. And again, I would presume that nobody saw any, anything wrong with what occurred Sunday. It's the fact that we want to apply that going forward to board incidents, not include that on board every Sunday. Again, I think that was the right approach. We support it. So again, I think from the Board's perspective, from my perspective, completely supportive of what's been asked of us. To your point, I agree. As I pick through our board policies, we're covered, in my opinion. And now, Mr. Hook may come back and say that there's things that need to be changed, but I think in general, we're covered. It's the emphasis of the amplification from the Board to the community, to our students, to our parents, to our administration, to our teachers, that we take this extremely seriously and we do view it, you know, in the same space as what occurred on Sunday. So I fully support it.
I was at that meeting as well, and what struck me is that, and I think most of us or most people think about the high school or the junior high and these, all of these things occurring, but when the students got up there, I tried to take note of what they said, and some of them said, "Well, this started in the third grade, this started in the fourth grade." This starts earlier than any of us think. So to me, and it's not going to address these fires, but long-term, we need to be working at Jonathan, or at Clear Creek, we need to be working at these elementary schools so that, because those children are young enough that if it's brought to their attention in an appropriate and supportive way, I think you can make a lot of headway. And you can turn attitudes and behavior. When they get to be fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen years old, it's a lot more challenging. So what I took away from that is we need a, and I hope this, the, what's it called?
Tiffany Taylor.
Tiffany. That Tiffany helps us with that because I, I think that's something that could be done with the principals, with the administrators, and the elementary school. That's, that's three buildings. They need to do a better job of that. The other thing that struck me is just... Sometimes I get emotional, but, not sometimes, when I talk, but, but, but as I look back and the one gentleman, I think, said, "Why did it take this group to maybe move us?" That is the way it works. You, you need a group of people to cause change. I came to that meeting back seven years ago where the Yehud took out the, and I was not involved, I was on the school board from 1996 to 2000. But after that, I just kind of moved away and didn't get involved, didn't know what was going on. But because of the things that were happening with board and schools, I came. And if he was sitting in the middle of that room, he couldn't, that flag would have gone through the ceiling. We're not talking about just waving a little Confederate flag. He took the thing out in the front row, raised it up, and nobody on that board said, "You, sir, you need to excuse, and we won't proceed until you, until you do." He stayed there. He had the flag out for quite some time. So, so were we not all comfortable? Why, why didn't I go home thinking, "What in the world? That's not right." But I didn't, I didn't do anything. I mean, sometimes it, it takes a group of people who want to make change and want to see things differently to move people, and that's, that's what this is all about. So I did go home, though, and I decided I was going to, I was going to get back on the Board and get rid of those people, and we did it. So, so, so sometimes what these people up here have done in their own way to get on this Board and to do the right thing and make the changes isn't obvious every day, but that's what they have done. And that's what these people have done, these administrators have done. So we're all in this together. We just, we just need, we just need to keep this moving. And I appreciate Lisa's, Lisa's comments and Mr. Blonge, and it will, there is a board member up here that doesn't find this abhorrent, abhorrent. I'm the oldest guy, so there's not much. There's not, there's no room for this, so that's all.
Just on your first point, I, I think I'll, and one of those pillars that we talked about with the technical piece or the critical piece, where there was an idea talked about about the GARE-type program, that sort of is age-appropriate, and they kind of work this way. So all that to say, yes, and I think you had, Fred had, that it isn't just a junior a junior high, it's a part of our discussion, and, you know, something that we would look at, so it's just a start with our students that are young here, so just developing.
I could either do it now or at the comments. I'm in a unique situation, you know, I taught here 35 years, and I'm still involved, I am being a coach in our football program, and so, and I do this to make sure all of my athletes have the same safety and, you know, the respect. That's one thing that I work real hard on, is holding the kids responsible for whatever it might be. And we haven't had, knock on wood, a situation where some of this stuff has come up with the group that I coach. But one of the things that I try to instill in those kids is that, you know, you've got to respect each other, you've got to understand what we're trying to do as a football program, so that the community can be proud of us. And, you know, through the years, I've coached all kinds of different minorities, not as much maybe as some other school districts, but we've been able to, and I've been able to talk and try to instill in them the respect that is needed, not only just to each other, but also, you know, with their families and stuff. So, you know, I'm glad I'm still able to do that. You know, I wasn't on the committee, you know, I didn't attend the meeting, but, you know, through what I do, by still being involved in the coaching area, I feel very strongly that I'm able to make some kind of impact with those that I'm still in contact with.
Any other comments from the board or the stretch? But I'm hoping to back up the public comment. If anyone else has a comment on this agenda item, I can keep it to three minutes, so if you just state your name and address.
I'd like to thank you all for listening, for hearing what the community has to say here. I'd like to challenge you all, as leaders in our community, this is a one-time meeting tonight, there's a lot of intensity, there's a lot of emotion, there's a lot of stuff that has come from the past and people living here. You all can be the catalyst of change. You all can be leaders in the community. You all have the ability to work with the administration, to support the administration, to hold the administration accountable, to not tolerate this kind of behavior in our school system with our children. I'll tell every one of you that the experience gets very, very, very thick when you have a child of color, you have family that you are. It's something that I have not lived, except through my son. And I'll tell you all, it's horrible to watch and horrible to see. So I ask and I challenge you to take the initiative, to take leadership, to not let this stuff just sit around and wait. I absolutely love that you're all in agreement. I love the fact that we have this many community members here that are interested in this, that are supportive of this, that are supportive of you, that are supportive of you to actually move forward and to drive change in our community. Please be the leaders that we've elected you to be. Thank you.
My name's Craig Solomon-Gilmore, proud father of Sahabi Salman Reiki and Saiva Salman Reiki, who's not here tonight, and husband of Lena Reiki-Salman. My passionate family, I'm supported by great friends, and I am the chairperson, chairman of Peacock. I wanted to read a statement to you, the board. We do not seek an adversarial relationship with the board. In fact, that's better. In fact, we want to work with the board and administrators to make meaningful changes. We will speak out when the opportunity arises to address the problems we are concerned about. We encourage the board and administration to act on the first measures we laid out within the next week, recognizing that the fourth will take time and may fall under the DNI committee. We are happy to work with the board and administration on language that would be appropriate and firm on the issues. This will help the administration and board take the clearest and firmest stand possible against racial, sexist, and homophobic threats by students. Pretty simple, pretty simple. You know, we're getting traction in the media by not positive traction. We're a great community, and let's stay a great community. And I do agree with you that this education starts early. In the third grade and the second grade, we can talk about differences in parents, but we can also talk about similarities, what we have in common. All the same blood, we're all one under God, right? What we say, indivisible. So that education starts early, and I'm not saying it's too late for the older kids. It's never too late. If it wasn't too late for you, it's not too late for me. I was educated by my oldest daughter on several things, and she reminds me every day that I'm still. So, you know, we just ask for these initiatives, these steps to be taken, and when there are acts that happen, act swiftly, justly. Because, as Chris stated earlier, these acts are basically terrorist acts, because it's intimidation, because the child is unable, like my wife said, to learn in an environment where they're afraid, where they're fearful. You think about the children that have been victims of gun violence and bombing, and genuine criminal acts of terrorism, how they're trembling at their desk, and they can't return back to the school. Well, that's the children of color, almost every day. When they walk through the halls, hearing the word nigger, porch monkey, you look like, fill in the blank. They walk with their heads down, and we, as parents, have to come and prompt them up and encourage them. We shouldn't have to do that every day, every week. And when they see a revictimization, they themselves are revictimized. I am so proud of my daughters, and I'm so proud of the other students that have stepped forward to share their stories with us, because they're going through that pain again. And they're not numb to it. We must remember that they're 16, 17 years of age, and we, as adults, have difficulty even doing that today. So I ask again, we ask again, that you all take these steps and make a decision swiftly. Thank you.
Heather Mauer, 9248, Huntington Way. When I hear some of this, I hear a little déjà vu, how we're going to institute new curriculums and do new things. I remember walking to the opening of the sensory garden, and there was a wall full of multicultural children, because the new curriculum is just, "Oh, that's a tough for the past superintendent, we have another superintendent, in a few years we'll probably have another superintendent." The board made change. I urge you, do whatever you decide to do with this, to make it long-lasting, so that we're not constantly reinventing the wheel to make it last.
I'm actually Maggie L. Tucker's mom, who did the presentation for the DNI. I just wanted to come and say that, as a member of Peacock, and as a member of, as a person of color, children of color that have graduated from and currently attend Spring Garden, I'm really encouraged with what had occurred tonight. I was really saddened and a little upset, I think, after, you know, Peacock met last week, and then to have such swift action, although I'm glad it was swift action, it was horrible. You know, not to repeat what Chris said, but it really felt like a kick, like we're asking, we're begging you to help our children, and it needs to go to a committee, and it needs to be discussed, and it needs this, and it needs that. And we're here today, and what I've heard from most of you today, that you're in agreement that, you know, this is situation critical, and we can't wait any longer. And I really hope that, at least in the interim, we get something out from the administration before it can come from the board officially, because I just think our kids need it. It's just like one important thing, and it's hurtful. So thank you for being open.
My name is Bernadette Klingman, and I'll be very quick. I come from a different perspective. I am not a parent who has had children who've gone to Spring Garden. I have only lived in the Spring Garden community for three years, but I read the article in the newspaper on Sunday, the article today, and it was really heartbreaking. That's what really brought me out today. The other reason I came is because I, too, am an expert in workforce effectiveness, dealing with diversity, equity, and inclusion. And so I'm going to be closely, I hope to be involved in helping you all to resolve this. I want to say something that I got from Scott this evening that I learned. He says, "You cannot solve a problem until you have the conversation." And I say to Ms. Bev, kudos to you, give her a round of applause. And you said, "We have to stop right now and have this conversation." If you had not have done that, there would have been a whole lot of people in this room who would have went home hurt. I want to say kudos to the board for addressing this issue. When I read the article, I was extremely proud of you all as a board, extremely proud, and that's what made me come as well. If I had regrets for the wonderful things that I heard about the superintendent, and some statements that he made that said that children who spoke up were courageous, if I had not have heard that statement, superintendent, I would not have shown up, because I would have known that the leader was not truly involved. But like Lisa said, you cannot push things under the rug. You are in a crisis situation. Trust me, I've been doing this for 20 years. That is where you are. And if you take her lead and address it, even though it's hard, and it might take the entire board meeting to do so, you are doing the right thing for your community, the school, but especially these babies, these children, these children. I just say thank you, and I'm very, very proud of you to be here this evening.
My name is Jeff Paschek-Johannes. I am a board member of Peacock. I do want to thank the board here for their statements and for their support, our efforts, and especially Superintendent Hook's for endorsing our actions and committing them and having his personal backing for those measures. I think this weekend's issue with the sexual assault theme also emphasizes that these same kind of actions need to occur, not only against racist threats, but also misogynistic threats and homophobic threats in our school district, since we have incidences of those in the past as well. So I just wanted to bring that up, that as a Peacock, we're often focused on an anti-racist thing, but we fully support and endorse and come alongside anti-homophobic efforts, anti-misogynistic efforts, and think, of course, that those should all be part of what the DNI committee does, and of course, what the board will support with, and they take action. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Abigail Tucker, the one who gave the presentation. Although Saiva isn't here tonight, her and I have worked really closely to do a lot of stuff within this school district, a little bit separate from this committee that I just wanted to give a brief overview about, since I don't think a lot of people know about it. One of our proudest accomplishments is we formed the Minority Student Union at the high school, with all of the members of Krieger Day. We meet about every two weeks, and we're actually having a meeting tomorrow. We use this as a space just to sort of talk about all the different sorts of things that we've gone through in the school district, just to provide support and fellowship with each other. And although we will be at a couple meetings, we already see a lot of prospects for that, so we're very excited. As I mentioned earlier, we also gave presentations to all the school buildings over the summer. It was a presentation talking about some experiences we've gone through, some historical concepts, and different things that we want to see in the school district. And obviously, the school district, the school year is a little bit different with COVID and everything, but definitely trying to make some changes. We've also been working very closely with Mr. Rar and there, and Mrs. Cook, and Ms. O. who went to this year. But we actually have a book club going with some of the administrators called, the book "How to Be an Anti-Racist." Just reading parts of that, and we're hoping to trickle it down to the teacher level eventually, just to do some training with that. So we obviously, we have a lot of projects in the books, and there's a lot of other things that I didn't mention, but just so we know, obviously, we talked about how this is going to be a very slow-moving process, the actual changes within the curriculum and everything, but Saiva and I are working really hard to make a lot of changes within the school district, but since we're still just in high school, there's only so far that we can go. So just know that students are noticing changes, and we're still looking up to you guys to be able to make the big ones that we can do.
So just real quick, and we're going to keep public participation, but I actually have a question, and if you don't have to raise your hand, if you're a student, could you raise your hand? I'm just curious, I'm a student, if you have a question. One, two, three, five, six. Okay. Now, just out of curiosity, I know this is kind of out of order, but I'm just going to go ahead and wrap the conversation. So for the students specifically, with parents, China, what's more powerful? If you get an email or a communication from your principal or from Mr. Hook, in terms of the subject matters of denouncing racism, what has more impact to you? You can just, I mean, when you see something from Mr. Martin, does that have more of an impact than if you got something from Mr. Hook?
Mr. Martin.
Mr. Martin?
Don't get a big headache, Mr. Martin.
I was, oh, I'm curious.
I made one yesterday.
That's where I'm kind of going with this, is I presume that, I mean, I'm calling my school days, I don't think I know who the superintendent was when I was in school, but I certainly know who my principal was. So I'm just curious, if we do something from the administration, what carries more weight with the student audio, because I think that's obviously what we're trying to, okay, thank you, I just, that's what I.
But the one cognitive parental theory of I think is less.
Okay.
And on audience.
Okay.
I would bring the student's email.
First read again. So I applaud the board for wanting to talk candidly about race, because it's a very untalkable thing, and being a black face in white spaces, you're always aware that you're a black person of color. And so I've had that life for about 20-some years. But anyway, as it relates to the latter, or whatever the correspondence is, I But anyway, as it relates to the latter, or whatever the correspondence is, I think that, yes, talk about, you know, you know, put up with misogynistic, you know, conversations or comments or religion or any of that. However, I personally would like to see a specific correspondence dealing with race, speaking to children of color. Why am I saying do that in addition to grouping everyone together? Like I said, this issue has gone on for years. Here's part of the challenge. Most of the time, y'all not going to even hear about it. Most of the time, teachers aren't going to even hear about it. And these kids, these kids have like their own code system. Most of the times, we as black parents aren't going to hear about it. Why? It's our own kids, nothing's going to happen. So the reason I'm saying that I personally think it needs to be specifically about race, and this will not be tolerated with our students of color, one call, the email, the whole shebang, is because it speaks to the level of importance about this particular issue. So, that's what I'm saying.
Hello, my name is Abigail Capret, and I'm a current junior at SHS. I didn't plan on speaking today, and to be honest, I didn't even know I'd be coming to this meeting until about three hours ago. A little story about me, I haven't even attended this school for two years, two complete years. I moved here at the beginning of my sophomore year, and I find it appalling that I've seen this type of behavior multiple times. This year alone, I've been aware of attacks on the LGBTQ plus community, attacks on the African-American community that were obviously mentioned earlier, and the obvious attacks on women that was shown this weekend. I'm not here to critique the school's response on these issues, I felt they were good. However, I am here to ask the committee, how will the board be proactive in preventing these issues? As much as I appreciate their reactive responses, I want to see more proactive measures. I implore you to make material, comprehensive changes to the curriculum. As a student, I am begging you. As a person of the LGBTQ plus community, and as a woman, and as an ally to all of my BIPOC classmates, I'm begging you. Thank you.
My name is Shayna Chavis. We are newly minted to Spring Grove. We actually moved here during the pandemic. I have three students that are enrolled in Spring Grove. So coming here tonight is so important, because I myself have gone through this very same experience when I was in high school, and the prospect of my children having to deal with it was less than desirable. So I just wanted to say thank you for having the conversation, thank you for bringing it to the forefront. People are listening, we are aware, we are noticing, and we are waiting and anticipating what will happen at this point. Since it's been drawn to your attention, you can't dismiss it, and you know that it is a problem that needs to be addressed, and should be addressed in a way that has not been previous. So again, thank you. I'm excited about my secondary readers starting in the fall, because right now they're all online. So I'm excited about them stepping on the campus, but I think it would be wonderful for them to step on campus with me feeling confident that the leadership is aware of them and their issues. Thank you.
Any other comments on this topic? Anything for the board?
I just, I just want to thank you guys for, this was so great, what everybody spoke to, and to, was it Shayna that just spoke up? You referred to your children and their issues, those are not issues, those are your children, and they're beautiful the way they are, and we're going to figure this out so that all of our children feel so comfortable walking through our, through our halls, and that when they're walking out to the buses, that the kids aren't going to go nuh nuh nuh. And then, you know, it was interesting, is Lee in here that was at the Peacock meeting?
He wasn't able to-
He's not here? Okay. He, I don't know him, but he brought up a really interesting thing. Is Deanna still here? So my son is African-American, and he brought up a really interesting thing, because he shared in his, in his situation that when he, when he was called the N-word, he was aggressive, and he punched a kid, because he was sick of it, right? And when it happens repeatedly, it wasn't okay, you can't do that. And he deserved to get an out-of-school suspension because he punched a kid. But that's what we need, those are the kind of things that we've got to get down to our families and help people understand that it's not okay. So those are not issues you're bringing us, those are your families. And that's a beautiful thing. So we welcome your family in, and all of you guys, it's just, it's beautiful that you came and that you shared it, and hopefully you can see from all of us that we get it, we've had some, we have some challenges, we have a lot of room to grow, but we're going to figure this out, and it's not going to be perfect, but we're going to figure out, and we, it's got to happen sooner rather than later. So some things, it's going to take a while, but some things we can do faster, and I, I hope that you're seeing that we, we're going to work towards that. So thank you for being willing to share your situations and to give us some ideas of things that we can do practically, because I'm a white woman, and I, I live it closer than a lot of white people do, because I have a son that is African-American, but I don't live it what you do. And so I learn from you, and thank you for sharing your experiences, because it helps us as a predominantly white community know how to best serve people that don't look like us, or LGBTQ plus, your community. It helps us know how to best serve your community when you share with us what we can be doing to best welcome people that don't look like your traditional community of that a lot of people in Spring Grove do. So just thank you for being willing to come and share with us tonight.
And so, to everyone that attended, and I know we've gotten a little bit tripped out, thank you for the constructive conversation. I mean, Mr. Henderson said it well, we need to, we need to hear that. And again, to the, to the individual, the board's committed to this, and I think we also got some great feedback tonight about how we can do some things more immediately than we were for the board letter, so I appreciate that. And my apologies personally from the rearranging the schedule of my attempt was to not have everyone sit through more board meetings than they had to, since I'm assuming that not everybody's interested in maintenance supplemental and things like that. And so I'm going to go ahead and have a five-minute process, just in case anybody gets, we're done with this agenda, and we're going to move on through the rest of our business meeting. Just to help hurt feelings of people who want to stay for the rest of it, again, I think the five-minute process will allow people to, if they want to stay, use the rest of the room, grab a drink, if not, you know, feel good. Again, thank you for the time. We're going to bring us back into session, and we're going to pick up the agenda still in our possession. This is item 3.3, this is our field maintenance supplemental, and Mr. Hook, this is your right now.
Yeah, I'm kind of helping rob out with this a little bit, most of the things on here, the maintenance we're talking about, field sup, field maintenance supplemental, we need a little bit of during the spring, during baseballs, softball seasons, and dragging line and point, and looking for, you know, a couple of stipends, three of them, $500 per season per field, 1,500 total, come out of maintenance already, but had maintenance off of the union, circularly.
Questions or comments from the board? Okay. We'll go to item 3.4, this is gifted services coordinator and elementary curriculum and literacy coordinator positions, and this is item's just focus.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. I am seeking to separate our current position of elementary and gifted services coordinator into an elementary curriculum and literacy coordinator and a gifted services coordinator. The reason for this request is, well, this will take us back somewhat to where we were in 2015, with a separate person focusing on literacy and a separate person focusing on gifted. If you look at our history and curriculum instruction department, all the way back to 2009, you'll see that we had six administrators, and then in 2015, we did some pretty deep cuts down to two administrators. We did that for four years, until last year when we hired Mrs. Rutherford as a secondary curriculum specialist, and that was, has been a true godsend, so we appreciate your backing on that. But what we have seen since we abolished the position of literacy coordinator is that our literacy and reading scores have taken a slide downward. So requesting that that curriculum position of elementary and gifted be separated such that we are able to better focus on literacy skills. May I insert any questions on that?
Okay. I thought that was dramatic, Bob, for some reason. Any questions from the board?
Yeah. So my confusion with this is, when, I understand the need for the literacy, I've seen where our data is, and I can understand that. When this was brought to the board, when we're looking at the financial component, there, there were multiple questions that we had, and what was brought to us was, we're spending like $1.2 million in gifted, and it was a way to better use differently, or look at how, what we're doing in our gifted to reduce the cost, and looking at possibly doing something different that we, that would reduce that gifted cost and would allow us to bring in a literacy specialist. So with this, what I, like, with the questions that we came up with, all the questions were focused around gifted, but what I'm seeing, what was brought to us, is just an additional position. So I agree that we need this, but I'm still looking at the $1.2 million, and when we talk through all those different positions, I feel we are, and I had three kids that went through that program, I'm not dogging that program, but when I look at our data of what we are doing with our gifted right now, and what we're spending, and the number of kids that we're serving, I have a hard time supporting bringing in more positions here without moving around the funds of what we're doing with our gifted, because a few years back, I think it was around $250,000 when the state recommended a different model, and I voted no on those positions, because I didn't feel they were necessary. So I'm a little bit frustrated, confused of what we're doing with this gifted, because the main conversation that was brought to us was around saving with the gifted. I can support this literacy, but I am not hearing what we are going to be doing to figure out this gifted piece to save the district, because I'm just not seeing the results of all this additional money that's going into this gifted, of how we brought on that extra staff. So that's where my struggle is with this.
Okay, well, I wasn't privy to those conversations, let me see if I can shed some light on your concerns.
Thank you.
We do have a committee of 15 teachers that have met last week and this week, they will meet again on April 7th, and then further are out until we, as a district, come up with a plan on gifted delivery. So this is a team of teachers in grades one through five, so the focus is on elementary gifted, and those teachers were recommended by their principal for the committee, and they are doing a great job as far as what is the history of gifted, what are our scores through the state of Ohio with regards to the gifted indicator, what do we believe the program should look like in elementary? So if you break down that $1.2 million, you will see that that primarily is in the elementary grades. That is why we're looking at the elementary gifted program. So if you look at our scores from the elementary to the middle, to the high school, we're doing the best as far as gifted input points at the elementary. One of our teachers said, "Why are we looking at elementary when if we're looking for gifted input points?" We're looking at gifted in part so that we can take a look at the finances that are going into gifted, knowing primarily the majority of those dollars are going into the elementary program. So I hope that helps you to understand that we are taking a very close look. We do have 15 teachers that were recommended by principals. That team of teachers includes GISs, it includes teachers of typical classrooms, and it includes an inclusion teacher who works with special education children. We also have our elementary principals representative at these meetings as well, so that they can give their input and know what's going on, so that we're not delivering something that 15 teachers came up with to elementary principals that did not have any input as well. So we hope to be able to bring a plan to you that is teacher-developed, but guided by our current administration as far as law. I want, I want you to know, I know that you're on board with the literacy piece, because you, you look at our scores, you know that our scores have taken a slide downward, since we have had a literacy coordinator. The state does require that we have a gifted coordinator. I, I can't do both. I can't do both as my current personnel. You know, when I say in 2009, we had six administrators in our curriculum instruction department, let me just quickly, excuse me, go over that. Back in 2009, we had, of course, our executive director, we had gifted coordinator, we had math and science coordinator, we had literacy coordinator, we had an administrative position that was in technology, then we had an individual that was a district test coordinator, title one coordinator, testing coordinator, CCIP coordinator, all bundled into one. Chuck Wiggins and I, for four years, held down the board, and that department has two people with more students with more or less coordinators. We're doing the best we can, folks, but we can't keep the scores up to, now obviously we have Mrs. Rutherford who's working very hard, in the 6A area, specifically in English language arts and student skills, so we're attempting to address that in the middle level, but we, we can't keep up what we're doing at the elementary level and be able to deliver these children. So we're doing everything we can through committee on the gifted end of things, but without that literacy, I, I can't do it. We don't have the personnel to do it.
Yeah, I get it, from what, I get this, the, you have to have gifted and the literacy. When, when we have our classroom teachers, and there's nine GISs, three liaisons, and the coordinators, that's a lot supporting gifted, a lot supporting gifted, and our results are-
They're good at the elementary level, they're very good. They're actually carrying the secondary level. So if you look at the gifted inputs, you know, Mr. Wiggins and I have done a report card presentation to you for years, you will note that we are a fraction of a point away from that 118 that's expected by the state. The elementary level, Mrs. Rutherford and Mrs. Hunter, they're above the 118, they are carrying the district right now.
I guess I'm looking at what was given to us from other districts that are spending significantly lower with different staff. I'm just, I'm just, I'm glad that you're going to explore other models to see if there's something that we could do to still support our gifted program without putting that much money, so that we then can have a specialist in, with literacy. It just feels that our gifted is heavy, with, we're financially tight in our district, and it feels like our gifted is really getting, it's heavy, and legally, we don't have to support it that heavily.
Well, I think, and I, I do want to try and, because in this meeting that we discuss, you know, again, Ms. Cook, I know you're kind of not privy to what we ultimately look at, but, you know, part of the issue with the 1.1 or 1.2 that we keep referring to is really an accounting issue between districts, and we did lay that out, where with Spring Grove, we have dedicated positions that from a- a, just a PNL statement, we funnel those costs into a gifted bucket of expense. Other districts have shared resources that based on what we're seeing, and I'll use Loveland City as an example, they're saying, they report out that they spend $43,000 in gifted. That's with a student body of 4,400 and a student body of 5,800. So part of the, kind of the shock, which I also felt initially when you hear $1.2 million, is when you look relative to other districts, we are higher. But again, I think that's a function of how the accounting is done, and that's not by any means something that is an issue with how Ms. Stacy keeps the books. It's just the fact that how our accounts are structured in Spring Grove differs district by district, and I think that plays out here. So again, I'm fully supportive of what you're saying. And I think from a reading perspective, that's something we need to, or literacy rather, focus on. But again, I think the data in this case, when we compare district to district, is a bit deceiving, just from an account, basically, just an accounting perspective.
There's some differences, I agree with you, but there are some comparisons that can be made. The difference between $1.2 million and 43,000, I mean, even, I mean, there's, there's some place in the middle. And we're very, with everything that she presented to us, we're very high over here. I just, I just don't think that we're in that financial place in the district.
Well, not to put it blunt, Loveland City spends almost $11,000 per student. We spend $7,900, but again, the fact that they're reporting $43,000, I take no stock in their reporting. And again, the fact that we have very distinct accounts for distinct gifted positions, I'm much more comfortable in our number. And again, I appreciate the fact that we're going through evaluation period of how we deliver this model in the future, but my point is, today, I feel comfortable with what we saw in our last meeting and then what we presented today.
I want to address what you said. The state does require that we have a coordinator. I don't know how they're paying coordinator $43,000, honestly. So if they've got an administrative licensed person overseeing forty some odd hundred students and they're paying that individual $4,300, I'd be very surprised by that.
I, I-
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you how it's going to be done. They have a curriculum person who's coded to a curriculum function, not a gifted function. That, so their curriculum person handles the gifted. In terms of the actual expenditure, there's specific function codes that you have to charge GISs to. If your regular, and teachers are the ones delivering 100% of the gifted, you can charge them to an 1100 function, which would not appear under the gifted, so those expenses would not pop up under the gifted category, even though they might be providing gifted services. So that's why you have the disparity. We code ours to gifted because that's 100% what they're doing. And then other districts use the regular teachers to provide all of the gift instructions and they're charged under their instruction code. So that is like what you're saying, it's the difference of how it's being accounted for. Okay? So we do have to identify children from the state. We do not have to serve them. So if we choose to go bare bones, we don't have to serve them, we just have to identify.
I wasn't saying that at all, but to your point, we do have to identify. Do we have to serve to the level that we do? Might there be another way to serve them that doesn't cost us to that level?
Yes. Yes, and might be another way to serve them, and at our April 7th, on our agenda is to go over models per ODE for gifted service delivery. So our teachers will be seeing those different service delivery models, as well as what some other districts in the area are doing. So that's, 2015 will be looking at that.
That's great.
And at the end of the day, it may not change dramatically, but it may restructure, and that's part of the work that they have to do. But one thing isn't going to change is the fact that we need these two positions split. That piece, depending on when we post that and who would apply, et cetera, then you can start getting into visitor bodies to be saved. But if nothing changed, we still need to make that break. And if we are going to spend any extra dollars, I'd rather it be for literacy, you know, if nothing changes. But I don't believe, I think we're going, I think they're digging really deep into this, which is really what I would have expected, and I thank you for that. I'm looking forward to the next meeting, too.
Yeah, they're working hard. They worked out for five o'clock tonight, doing research, analyzing some data, so they're working really hard, and they, you know, they volunteered to be on it through the recommendation of the principal. They had the option to not serve or not serve, so we're really pleased with the work they're doing.
Any other questions from the board on item 3.4?
No questions. I just kind of feel, I'll just, quite frankly, just a little confused by some of the back and forth, but I just wanted to express that, and I want to be careful, too, because obviously some executive session that I want to track, but just wanted to reiterate that this sort of syncs up with my understanding of the conversations, that we had this conversation about the need to split the gifted and literacy coordinator, and that there was this work going underway that got that leveled down into the delivery model, that that work was sort of underway and would have a bit of a longer tail to it. But to Mr. Hook's point, that whichever way that work, sort of how that culminates, that there was still the importance of splitting these two. So I just wanted to reiterate that it sort of matches my understanding of the conversation, and I appreciate the work that's going into looking at the delivery models. I think it points where it is. I think there are some very legitimate questions about how we're deploying our resources, and I think it's great to take sort of a fact-based, data-driven approach, and that what was shared with us, and I'm glad to hear that it's progressing and that it's moving on, and I look forward to hearing the results of that.
Thank you for your question. Okay, we'll move to item 3.5, which is, thank you, Ms. Cook, I'm sorry. Item 3.5, 2021 summer school program, and that's Mr. Mars.
Jokingly, but anything you say, summer school will take, just so you know. Just kidding. Now, summer school, I'm just going to speak to the original credit classes. I think Ms. Cook's going to actually speak to the credit recovery program, but we want to go back to the face-to-face model this summer. We feel like that honestly is the best approach. Kids need that face-to-face. It would be two weeks, and I believe the weeks that we have chosen are immediately right after June 7th to June 18th. We're looking, we're trying to, we always like to plan over, so like to have two health teachers, potentially four PE teachers, and then two financial literacy. We don't typically fill all those positions, but we like to have, like to have plenty to go to if we need them approved. So as far as the original credit, the price hasn't changed in quite a while. Actually, that's remained the same. I think in the future that will have to change, but as of right now, it doesn't. I went ahead and looked ahead to summer dates 2022 based on our calendar, and I put that on the proposal here. There was a question brought to my attention about calendars with summer school. A lot of times, PE teachers like to plan a longer day, at least once or twice during the course of those two weeks. And we, two years ago, we wanted to get the calendar out beforehand. We're going to do that again, probably two weeks before the end of school, so that parents can actually plan the two weeks of summer school, especially for those longer days on PE days, because they like to go canoeing, which is hard to do in a six-hour time block, so they try to do some different, different activities, which require longer days. So that's really all I have. I did give the registration form and then the pamphlet, which we make available, and they'll be online. Registration, again, will be paper, paper checks or some other way. We tried to do the online piece, and it caused quite a bit of confusion last year, and so on. So we're going to go back to the old method of doing that. I don't know if you have any other questions or that I can answer.
I heard your finance class was amazing last year. Whoever taught that class was spectacular. I had a couple of friends whose kids took it and said they just did it, or was it, did you have it last year?
We did. Actually, last year's model was all remote.
It was, yes.
And it was 15 days long, and it was four hours a day. So it was same amount of time where they would, in the remote, they would have like a morning session, then they would break off, do some activities, come back and have a later session to end the day. It is, and obviously, with last year being remote, you could do it just anywhere, but I think most teachers, I think most students after this year believe that, man, first off, it's face-to-face, if I have to do remote, but man, I really don't want to do the other thing.
Right, right.
So we're trying to get back and see how we do with that.
That was impressive, and a remote, for a financial class, and a remote setting, to hear that many amazing things about this class was really impressive to me.
And I think our teachers last summer did very well, given the circumstances, and the model worked.
Yeah.
I mean, it worked.
But face-to-face is always better, yeah.
Yeah, face-to-face is always better.
Yeah, I agree.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Mars. Okay, we'll move to item 3.6. This is an update on the district's extended learning plan. This is going back to Ms. Cook.
Okay, happy to address our extended learning plan for our governor's suggestion. We have been working with our principals for the last few weeks with regards to the extended learning plan. We do feel like it is ready to roll as far as sending to ODE. We expect to be able to work with children at the elementary level in reading and math as our primary goal this summer, as well as our secondary children in grade six, eight in reading and math, and students at the 912 level in English language arts, math, science, and social studies. The high school program will be one of credit recovery. We typically offer credit recovery to our students in the summer for those who are short in one of the core core areas, so we need credits to advance to the next grade level. So they typically come. This will be the first time that we are offering a separate secondary program in grade six through eight to brush up on skills in math and reading that is outside of the title one program. The reading program and math program for the elementary students will be developed through data analysis of many of our different programs that we currently have in place for our young folks. The elementary principals are working closely with me on that data analysis as far as what students do invite in, and those will be through small group. The grade six through 12 will be through an ACACS tutorial program that we use, remember, here's there in the district. You do have ESR funding, so federal funding, that will assist us with our staffing hourly as well as access to programs. So we will have deep discounts available to our students who are credit deficient, particularly at the high school level. Those parents typically pay $440 per credit for recovery. We are hoping to offer that under $25 if the student comes throughout the completion of the credit. So our hope is to be able to have a little bit of skin in the game for the parent if the student completes the program, let it be a wash, and let the student have that as a gift from our federal government through grant funding. So we're pretty excited to be able to have a pretty robust summer program to brush our students' skills up, in particular in reading and math in grades one through eight and nine through 12, those students who are credit deficient.
Can I ask some questions?
Sure. Yes.
So when I was reviewing this, will there be busing for students or no?
That remains to be seen from our finances.
Okay. And that would be like with ESR funding, if we had enough of that?
Right.
Gotcha. And how is this, like, we don't typically offer anything for elementary, for like kindergarten through eighth grade, is that correct?
We typically do reading camp in the summer for students who are struggling with their reading skills, and we also do title one camps for students in grades six through eight.
So this is adding, is it the same basically that we're doing for the reading, and so we're adding math? Is that how it's different?
It's a little bit different. Title funding operates differently. So with programming and title, we're unable to supplant programming that we would be doing in another program to do in title. So you have to have two different sets of programs running because they're funded separately. Title does not allow us to use the same programming for typical summer school as we do for title summer schools. So they will run separately.
Gotcha.
And they are funded separately.
So when it says that, like in elementary, you're using like previous year's OST and Iowa scores and stuff, is that just assuming that because of the pandemic that there's going to be a gap in the learning also, and so it would be offered to them?
Right. We will have our Iowa scores back from our February testing to see. So for instance, with our Iowa test of basic skills, if a student, let's say they got a 70 on our math assessment one year, we would not expect two years later that their math assessment would drop to a 50.
Right.
So we're looking for significant drops in the national norm assessment. We're also going to be looking at previous Ohio State test data. We're a little bit shaky on that, and then we did not add that data from last year. So what we're looking for is multiple data points. So the crackle star map reflex, and then those national and state norm tests will be the culmination of decision-making on children.
Is there a cost for the younger students also, or is it just for credit recovery?
The cost for the younger students is in personnel because those are smaller groups. So the older students, we can put more students in a room because it's computer-based, whereas there's more small group, one-on-one instruction. So the cost for elementary will cost more per student than it will for the upper grades, even though the upper grades are flying the program.
Do you have an idea what the cost would be and like what timeframe it would be? How could, and you might have already said that, like, what is the timeframe for this?
June. So we're looking solely in June. We did a survey of our teachers in elementary as well as in secondary to find out what their preference was as far as do they want to work in the summer, do they not want to work in the summer? If they want to work in the summer, how many hours do they want to work in the summer? If they want to work certain hours, do they want to do them every day, or do they want to do it every other day? So we have a pretty comprehensive survey with feedback from our teachers as to who was interested in doing extra work. We were pleased that we do have teachers that are willing to continue working past the school year. So that was the first step in the governor's plan for us to build the extended learning plan was if we don't have staff, we can't pull it off.
Right.
We appear to have staff.
So will it be hundreds of dollars for families, or?
No, 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 no. The cost to families is minimal. The cost to the grant is significant.
Right, right, okay, okay. Thank you.
Any thoughts on how many students will be captured in this, out of our student body? I'm not going to hold you to it, I'm just kind of curious.
I expect 200 at the middle level. I'm expecting roughly 65 at the high school level. Now, that is dependent upon, we currently have 35 young folks at the high school who are mathematically impossible to gain one or more credit. We have another 88 that need to show us that they're willing to work fourth quarter. So those 88 are on the wings. And then at the elementary level, that one is, it's kind of a crap shoot in that we're not sure where vacations are going to lie. We're pretty sure that every kid that's credit deficient at the high school level is going to come. I'm estimating 200 from the middle level, based on a much higher number of invitations that are going to go out because they're not used to coming. So these are, these are sheer throw dart at our door right now, as far as estimating how many students. But I, you know, I did get quotes when I asked for pricing on the secondary. I asked for 65 high school students with credit deficiencies. I asked for 200 tutorials for the middle level, knowing that we have, that's about half of them will invite, and then the elementary will have another couple hundred.
Thank you.
So I hope, I mean, best-case scenario is that they will all show up, you know, with vacations involved and family obligations. I'm guessing probably 50, 60%.
Yeah.
High school, 100%, 80, 50%, 60%.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
No, thank you. That's good to hear.
3.7, any other business? Do we have any, we're going to move into our treasurer's report. Stacy, I'll start with item 4.1.
I have 4.1, the approval of the February 2021 financials. The detailed financial reports are posted in the ORB, so I'm going to, if anyone has any questions, they're going to send me any questions you may have on there. Just a few highlights from those financials. We received $8.6 million in tax advances in the month of February. We will continue to receive tax advances for the rest of the month of March, and then we should receive a federal written date. And then we should receive a federal written deal. And then we'll look at that period of time and we're not receiving any tax advances, which will burn our cash balance down. All other revenues, including state funding, came in as anticipated. We're also in line from February in terms of all expenses that we believe would come in in the month of February in terms of expenses. Those came in line. As of the close of February, we had each a day in the Mott Line of Cash on hand. I did want to take a moment just to kind of go over some of the CARES funds. I've received a few questions. I've received a couple of micro requests. I just wanted to clarify some things within CARES funds in case anyone else had any questions about those. We have received CARES funds from several different sources. We received $100,000 from the Center for Springbrough. We received $100,000 from the township, from the county township. We also received about, close to $400,000 from S R I funds as well as C R I funds according to our community funds. And then we also received $350,000 from Lord County. Those amounts from the city township and county were all part of their COVID expenses money that they would provide and that they then in turn gave some of it to the schools. So we did receive 940, close to 945,000 in CARES money. Those are one-time funds. To kind of highlight a few of the things that we've had to purchase due to COVID, we've had to purchase Chromebooks, hotspots. We've had an exuberant amount of costs in cleaning, PPE, masks, thermometers. We've had expenses in contact tracing. We've had to purchase tables, chairs, different types of seating so that we could do social distancing. All of the monies that we have received to date, 945,000, have all been spent on COVID-related items. I think also part of that, that's important, even though those are only one-time money. We are expected to be getting $418,000 from S R I funds. We haven't received those funds yet, but like Andrew was discussing, we already have plans in place and we're not going to be making further plans to spend those monies on additional gap closings for students as well as other things that are going to be needed to reopen schools for next year as well, even though we're already open but kind of the transition into next year. So we're also possibly going to be receiving yet an S R I funds from the $2.9 trillion in funding that the president signed about a week and a half ago. We don't know what those amounts are going to be yet, but there are possibly some additional funds coming that way. But in turn from those monies that we received, I think it's also important to note that we were reduced money also due to COVID. So we were reduced 10% of our funding last year between March and June 30. That was over a million dollars in funding lost from monies that were already enacted in the law, but the governor signed an executive order reducing funding to schools. So we lost $1,037 and then we also lost another 3% of our funding this year, which totaled $468. So we've been reduced $1.5 million from monies that we already had in our budget used to educate kids. So those monies from the CARES funds definitely have helped offset some of those expenses, but we also had a lot of expenses that we normally wouldn't have if COVID hadn't occurred. So I just thought it was important to kind of explain that those are one-time monies we receive though, but we also have been reduced as well, so those are still part of the challenges. Hopefully next year so far, we don't have any funding cuts coming our way, but you know, the budget is still being processed through the House, so we'll have to see how that goes. So that's item 4.1. Item 4.2 is the permanent appropriations amendment. Each time about this time of the year, I bring the amendment, it's going to change just that we have our appropriations to split to the county auditor. So that is a specific degree at this time of the year. And then item 4.3 is approval of a donation for $2,500 from K3U Bon Bon Club to be used for the Springbrough volleyball program. We need to look on this.
Okay, you mean the item 4. Okay, yeah. Item 4.4 is the approval of items 4.1 through 4.3. Can I have a motion please?
Second.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bad?
Yes.
Stiki?
State.
Palaj?
Yes.
Good?
Yes. Back to item 4.5.
Yes, 4.5 is the approval to accept the amounts and rates as to clarify the budget provision and authorize the necessary tax levels to serve them to the county auditor. This is setting the tax rate for the 2021 tax year. And then item 4.6 is approval of donation of $30 from Longwood and Sharon loan from the student yield balance account. And then 4.7 approval of donation for $73.94 to the public college to be used at Dennis Elementary, Springbrough High School. And then we see the information below.
Item 4.8 is the approval of items 4.5 through 4.7. Can I have a motion please?
Second.
Anderson?
Yes.
Yeah. Yes.
Stiki?
Yes.
Palaj?
Yes.
Yes. Move into section five, the Superintendent's Report. Start with item 5.1, Mr. Buck.
Okay, Mr. President, members of the board, just need approval. First one, these were all talked about last week, or last board meeting. First one was approval of contract for farm equipment for high school leachers. Second is the contract for window replacement completed with the high school. 5.3 is the contract for the HBAC work that needs to take place at the junior high school. Some cooling tower replacement. And also the approval for the resolution for payment in lieu. And information in your pack.
Item 5.5 is the approval of items 5.1 through 5.4. Excuse me, can I have a motion please?
Tell it.
So a discussion on 5.1 through 5.4.
Just want to do a shout-out to the prodigy guy who hung in here this long for us. That's impressive.
Sir, I am so sorry.
You deserve this contract.
I hear any questions.
I feel like we should, but I don't. I don't know how to ask questions about that.
Happy to give a brief summary of the review.
That's okay. We're good.
Thank you, thank you for the work. You did a good job.
Thank you, sir. Okay.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bad?
Yes.
Stiki?
Yes.
Palaj?
Yes.
Yes. We're going to move to section six, Assistant Superintendent Administration. Our administrative operations.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. I present to you item 6.1, the personnel report for March. And I draw your attention to two retirements at the top. Peggy O'Ryan has been with us for 30 years, the junior high, as the head cook, and then Charlie Montgomery, you guys have all probably seen driving around here for the last 23 years. They are both retiring, so they won't be missed. Item 6.2 is the approval to separate the gifted coordinator and the elementary coordinator positions.
Item 6.3 is the approval of items 6.1 and 6.2. Can I have a motion please? Any further discussion on 6.1 or 6.2?
Anderson?
Yes.
Bad?
Yes.
Stiki?
Yes.
Palaj?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Item 6.4.
Item 6.4 is the athletic report for March. Followed by item 6.5 is the, this is the request to add the field maintenance supplementals for that work that needs to be done for dragging, lining, and mowing, I believe. And then 6.7 would be the administrative, or I'm sorry, 6.6 would be the administrative contract for Kyle Longworth, who will replace Jen Regia as the assistant A D.
Okay. Item 6.7 is the approval of items 6.4 through 6.6. Can I have a motion please?
I move.
Second.
Any discussion on 6.4 through 6.6?
Anderson?
Yes.
Bad?
Yes.
Stiki?
State.
Palaj?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Back to the Assistant Superintendent Administration. And this is item 7.1.
It's the President, members of the board, taking approval of the 2021 Springbrough High School summer school program.
Can I have a motion please?
I move.
Any further discussion on 7.1? Oh, I have a motion, David, Palaj.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bad?
Yes.
Stiki?
Yes.
Palaj?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Section eight, this is a board member reports, comments, questions, announcements, and future considerations. And Ms. Bachmann, you can start with.
Yes. So I wanted to start off with doing a report out from the Career Center that Charles and I serve on. I'm just going to share some of our Springbrough students' successes. We have the Career Center Springbrough Satellite Information Technology Junior Xander Lewis earned his Microsoft Azure Fundamental Certification through a program offered by Interalliance of Greater Cincinnati recently. Five students placed in the top three at Virtual Skills USA Regional Competition, and one of those was our student Ty Rinkie from Springbrough in welding. So that was super exciting. And we had 20 students overall, one was from Springbrough, that qualified to compete at Health Occupation Students of America Ohio Competitions, and that was Hannah Pace from Springbrough. So it's always fun when they give us these student reports to see our Springbrough students in many of the different ways at the Career Centers and where they're connecting. So I think it's important that we share out where their successes are. The other, the other piece is just, I guess, reflections on tonight. And I ask permission to share this. And this was, I received earlier today a text from Steve Rudisell. And I think a lot of, a lot of people here know Steve. He's a pastor in the community. And I wanted to make sure that he was comfortable with me sharing this because he said, "I sincerely wish that I could be at tonight's meeting, but I have prior commitment. It's important that the community sees support from white Caucasian males regarding this. As you may or may not know, my sister is adopted. I will never forget playing high school baseball, enjoying time with my friends in the dugout before a game, when abruptly someone utters, utters look at that family with the N-word, baby. Everyone exploded in laughter, except me. I can still feel the anger and hurt as I type this. I can still see the look, or I can still see the embarrassed look on their faces as I proudly said, 'That's my sister.' The silence was deafening, yet no apology, and everyone just moved on. I shudder to think the discrimination that my sister has experienced in her life just because of the color of my, of her skin. It deeply saddens me that over 30 years later, that there are still students experiencing this." And then I thought about a Facebook post that I read about a new family in Springbrough. And they were at Clear Creek Park, excited to go out in some of the nice weather. And she walked into the park and the N-word was yelled out at her kids. And many of us are not like that. Jamie's kids are probably not going to be like that. Dan's kids are likely not the ones calling. But there are many families that are not having these conversations with their students, with their children, that are, because it's happening all the time. And we heard it, we heard it. We heard it from some of the students. We heard it from the parents. And people are hurting. You hear it from Steve, who felt it from his sister. We heard it at the park. And there just is a heaviness. And I appreciate the administrators that came to the PIPAP meeting because families are appreciative of how you're handling it. That is truly not where the frustration is. In some schools, that's where the frustration is, is that it's not being handled well. It is being handled well. The issue is in our community, that families are not having the difficult conversations that we had in our room tonight. So I guess I'm just, I just feel heavy, even though I'm encouraged that we had this. It just feels heavy that, that we're still having to have these conversations that, because it's our job to teach that respect, that even if they look different and they might act different, we've got to be better, we've got to do better, we've got to instill this in them, to prepare them for the world that's going to look different than what they might experience here in Springbrough. That's it.
Ms. Bachmann, Palaj?
Well, sir, I don't have a lot to add, because I didn't want to already share tonight. I'd like to extend my thanks to everybody that came to the first part of our meeting and shared their thoughts in the middle of the long run. And thank you again for watching this recording and made it all the way through. Congratulations. So that was it. Appreciate the discussion and the compassion. I'm feeling so well. It's sobering, but also, you know, there's enthusiasm and excitement to continue the work that we started. That's it.
I want to thank all the people that came in tonight for the open conversation that we had. I think we as a board will have no problem at all moving forward with the four points that the COB came across. And look forward to hopefully seeing some changes down the road with people in the community and our students. I don't, I don't know. I don't feel heavy. I feel enlightened. I feel, I feel enthused. I feel excited. And a lot of the excitement is because I know the team of people that we have that will help us right these wrongs. So I'm, I'm, I'm personally, I think, speaker of the board. We're looking forward to this challenge. Sometimes you don't know what you don't know. But as it was said tonight, now it's apparent. So, and I think we have the people that will not sidestep this and they won't ignore it. They won't act like it didn't happen. They're going to take this on. And I think they'll feel invigorated if we feel invigorated. So we're ready to go. Let's do it.
Yeah, I agree. Let's, let's do it. Let's get to there. Oh, I agree. Everything was well said tonight, so. Okay, we are going to have an executive session tonight. It's just for the five board members. And it is, sorry, it's item 9.1, which is, item 1/3, I'm sorry, revised code 121.22G.1. It's through the employment or compensation of public people who are official. We will not have the action after executive session. If that will generate a motion after executive session.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bad?
Yes.
Stiki?
Yes. Palaj? Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you.